Board Special Bond Meeting to order at 5:49. So we have bond discussion and possible actions, our only agenda piece. Where would we like to start?
I don't know.
We are trying to still strategize making this happen in the window of time that we have available in a constructive and efficient and effective manner. And so I have been reaching out to some other administrators and some other support people, Paul Greg Ward, MDU, trying to figure out how we can make that happen. Because I think what was happening after our last bond meeting was that Hazen was reaching out to different vendors as I think we had requested that he do for things like siding indoors and security in the gym floor. And most of the time was getting a reaction like, okay, well, who's your architect? Who's your engineer? So where we were thinking that the facility assessment that you had before was providing enough information, we realized pretty quickly that it wasn't. And most of these contractors for a large-scale job like this with everything being kind of integrated and having to do with everything else, they're looking to have that in place. So we backtracked a little bit, conversations with Christie and Hazen and Paul and all different configurations of that, and asked Hazen to kind of put the brakes on doing it that way because it wasn't really bringing us to a good solution. And Paul Greg Ward, MDU, was going to reach out to the construction manager that they've hired to see if we could utilize them as a resource and sort of piggyback on their projects that they have there. After some discussions and some sharing of information, the assessment, floor plans, just state of affairs, kind of the Sheldon School, DEW decided that was probably not something they were comfortable doing in this window of time and that it would be in the best interest of Sheldon to hire an engineer and an architect to do some more planning. And so I think there were some different ways to go about getting to that. And we've kind of analyzed, like, do we have time for this? What could Plan A look like? Plan B? Plan A would have been to go out to bid for those services, but that probably wouldn't have allowed us to reach the timeline. We would have had to extend the day of a bond vote, do a special vote. Plan B, or Strategy B, was to reach out to the people that had done the facility assessment, which is Cross Engineering, who has an architect on staff, and ask them if they could do like a Phase Two of this project and meet the timeline. And then I guess Plan C and D would be, you know, push this off a year, which is not ideal because it's already been pushed back several years and there are items that have to be addressed. So I followed up with Cross this morning after talking with Paul and kind of going through that and following up with Hazen. Peter Cross is willing to come tomorrow morning and meet with Christie, myself, Hazen, and Paul and review the assessment, review the facility, and kind of get a better idea of what we're looking for. I did have quite a conversation with him today. So I think he has a pretty good idea, but I did share your itemized list that you came up with. He's going to review that as well. He thinks that he could do a Phase Two and get us where we need to be for bond with closer figures and a true plan of attack as far as materials and what needs to be prioritized in the timeframe and get us ready to bond in March. So I'm hoping that the board would be supportive of going down that road, knowing that there will be some additional costs, but I don't think it will meet the threshold to require us to go out to bid, which is something that would throw us off of our timeline.
Wadre is wanting to come and sit down with us.
Yeah. I think he understands. He was familiar with things that Sheldon is up against to some degree. So, and I did share with Paul as well that we were thankful for the time that he has been able to be, you know, kind of working in advisory capacity. And hopefully if we got this next step going and he was able to attend this meeting as another set of ears and, you know, that that might be the end of what we need him to do and we wouldn't need to keep utilizing his time. So I think that's our best plan of attack right now, is kind of my opinion, but...
And so Cross, if Cross was going to do a Phase Two, they would sub out the different jobs, but they would manage the project?
No, this would only be to get us for the bond.
Okay, okay.
This would simply be taking your facility assessment, your itemized list, doing site visits, working with an architect and an engineer to say, okay, you need new siding. What would be the best material? What does that mean for the, you know, to meet code for the doors and for the security system and a new entry? So create a plan, really. Yeah, enough to go to bond, knowing that then the real work would start.
Yep. And so if we went to bond in that past, then maybe we'd be looking for like a clerk of the works or...
Yes, and I did talk a little bit about that. I have talked about that with Paul and Hazen too. I think we've had that conversation. I think, yeah, it would probably be necessary. Maybe not a construction manager, depending. It depends on the scale and what we decide and what the engineers and architects think you should propose to the taxpayers and what you decide to propose.
Yep.
But if it's the scale that I think it might be, then yeah, I think you will definitely want to invest in somebody like that. And I think that will be the recommendation. But that process doesn't need to happen right now.
Got you.
Right now, we just need the information to be educated about what the school kind of needs and be able to have conversations to go propose a bond and know that the financial pieces of that, close enough that we can go to bond. And then we will start with RFPs and solicitations and working closer with an engineer and hiring a clerk of the works and coming up with a timeline. Again, it doesn't all have to be happening in one year even. You can stretch projects out. That's what we need to, so...
So this is probably a question I should have asked at our last meeting, but with a bond, is it, I don't know really anything about the structure of a bond. Is it money that is loaned to us from a bank?
It's money that's proceeds that the bond bank gains from selling municipal bonds.
Okay.
And so they will gather a pool together. I think I shared the timeline with you already, right, at one point? But that's basically, we would have to let them know that we want to participate probably in January, or we think we're going to want to participate, and then they take that and they start trying to find people to buy the bonds, and then they gain their financing that way.
I see, okay. And so what if we don't use the whole bond?
I need to clarify on that. Becky and I were just talking about that because the last two bonds that I was involved with didn't work quite the same way. They were, well, one was reimbursement model, but the other one, you got the money upfront, and now it's very much a reimbursement model where you spend the proceeds and then you put in a request for reimbursement.
Oh.
And so because of that, I'm not sure. It used to be that you could use the remaining principal and actually pay down your principal. So if you took out 300,000, didn't spend 20,000, you could use it and pay down your first principal payment, not interest, but you could put it towards the principal. But because of this reimbursement model, I'm going to have to look into that. I think that you don't have to spend it all, but I don't, I don't know for sure. I'm going to have to ask the bond bank.
And maybe also, so if we don't spend it all, do we pay interest on the entire amount or just what we spent? That might be...
I would assume that you would only spend it on what you, I mean, incur interest on what you spend.
Right.
But as I'm sitting here, I'm also thinking that they're planning on the sale of these bonds, and so I'm going to have to check.
Okay.
The structure of that has changed a little bit, so I just want to make sure that I'm right.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. But you would only pay interest in year one. So the first year that you bond is only an interest payment. So I would need to build that into your budget. If we do choose, if the board chooses to move forward with this as even a proposal, I would put a, you know, a placeholder in for some interest on the bond for year one.
Okay.
And I think I'd be able to get an amortization schedule before we needed to have a budget finalized to at least have some idea based on the Phase Two of the assessment.
All right. Who do you have, Christie?
I know it looks really interesting.
Lots of stuff.
There's stuff here. So I have some, a couple of different vendors that we reached out to about the gym floor. And I have just two estimates. I guess it's probably, it's not really, it's not a bid.
My caution against sharing the amounts right now.
Yeah.
Only in case we need to gather others.
Yep. But I, but we do have two, but we met with three different vendors, and so one of them that we just haven't gotten, we haven't gotten anything back yet. So they're really just bringing their different products, right? So this particular vendor, the people that do this work suggested this. There's options, right? There's, you know, and there's all sorts of pictures of the different kind of flooring. This vendor only does gym floors. They don't do anything else. They don't do hallways, they don't do, they do gym floors.
Okay.
That's it. And have been doing them for a long time, not just in Vermont. They have done work in lots of other states. So they, you know, talked me through it, which, yeah, I can't remember all of it. But there is a, you can feel, like, he put a tile down and said, stand on it, kneel on it, look at the difference. You know, there's a lot of give to it. There's, I don't remember the guarantee, right? There's quite a guarantee, obviously, but there's either, you know, a traditional wood look or there's, you know, colors. You can, you know, have, they build the lines in. They pretty much all kind of say the same thing. It's different products.
Good from Ohio's Cafeteria.
Yep, some, you know, and they talked about the person that came up and looked at, that brought this, these product, these were the two different ones. It was this and this one. And he talked about them both and which one is probably the better quality of the two. He said they're both good. There's a better quality in that. This particular person said that we, with any manufactured product that's not hardwood, we might want to consider replacing our bleachers because the weight of those bleachers coming out and going back in will, will over time, put a groove in the floor. And he said there's no, it's, it's just because they're so heavy.
Right.
So I asked him to just, when he sent me information to throw in, all right, what were bleachers cost? Just, you know, let's know at least. And so that was a question that I asked the next person was, so how will, how will these bleachers impact the floor? And that person said the same thing, that if you're not talking about this kind of hard tile, right, cement and hard tile, if you're talking about anything that has some cushion underneath, it's going to, it's going to put a groove.
So there isn't a bleacher that will not put a groove?
Well, there is, they make the bleachers out of, you know, like, plastic.
They don't weigh as much anymore.
You know, and they have, and they have different wheels, but they're, but they're just much, they don't weigh as much. And so all of these are really about weight over time and how, and, you know, how long, right? So bleachers are big and heavy, plus you put people in them.
Yep.
So as opposed to, because I asked about the cafeteria tables, right? And he said, well, those are, they're for shorter amounts of time with less weight on them. And so if you never moved the table, right, then it could cause more, more damage than if you were moving them around, but...
And you move cafeteria tables in different directions. It's, you know, it's not always the same path like with bleachers.
Yeah. He said you absolutely are going to get a groove. And it, there's not going to be anything you can do about it. It just will happen. And then these...
Is this the hallway people?
Yes, but they're, yes, this is hallway, but it's also multipurpose rooms. So this, this company was not, did not necessarily specialize in gym flooring, but they do multipurpose rooms, so it could be a gym. Yes. Right? None of them look like gyms, but, you know, people show up and give you what they give you.
And so these ones look like they might come in different, come with different types of padding underneath.
There's, yeah, this is, this is the floor right there.
Okay. So these aren't different, like, options?
Well, they're, those are different floors. So they have, so like it says, so yes, the answer is yes, but it tells you the different samples that they are. So they certainly do have different options. They're all made generally the same way, but some have more, some have more, you know, padding than others, more give. And the same with this one, although this, these were, this is all the same thing right here. This one was different.
Come along with baby, huh?
With the old gym floor being just pieces of wood.
And then in here, there were, you know, this will, I think this tells you the difference between all of those, right? The person that came with this puts down gym floors now, but used to work for this company, doesn't anymore, but used to work and says, you know, this is the product that he believes in.
Right.
So, I mean, it's interesting. And this is, this is these floors. And a handy little notebook. I was like, oh, how clever.
Pretty little marketing tool.
Marketing. So this is doing a bond, right? I mean, people just come and they put all these things that you don't necessarily know a lot about. And then, so I think that that's part of the, you know, certainly there are schools in the area even that have used those products. And so we could look at them or we could investigate them and look at, you know, how they've held up over time, what do they... But when someone's standing in front of you showing you those four things and saying, which, you know, which direction would you go? I'm like, I don't, I don't really know.
I like blue.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean that it's going to be what you want covering that whole story.
It was like, you know, the wood's beautiful.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, there's some green, green trim. I mean, that would be a really nice-looking floor when you go in. I'm sure it is, right?
Obviously, yeah.
The idea of visiting schools though, to see and ask questions.
Yeah.
Did they tell you which schools in there?
Yeah, but I don't remember off the top of my head. I believe Berkshire was one of them, actually, and Heinzburg? They just recently did, Williston? Heinzburg? One of the, one of them, just maybe in the last year or two, who did some renovations. But I haven't remembered. And, and the gentleman who came for that one didn't, hasn't sent his information. We got the binder. He sent over the binder, but not, not anything else. So we looked at that. We looked at the, what, what the hallway, the front hallway, and then to the double doors before you come down the wings. So front wing entrances, office, and four bathrooms with what we put in the entryway, so the spray-on. So we have, we got information for that. I asked him to, you know, just figure out with the bathrooms and then without, what's the difference between those? Because that's good bathroom material, that the spray-on is great bathroom material. And then the asbestos...
Abatement.
Abatement. They sent something. And then we checked into the security at the exterior doors. So what would that be if we had an access card or a fob? So that gentleman came up and looked at our, looked at our facility. We also talked to him about what, what would it be if we did our interior doors? Because we were thinking of when we do our doors in the K4 hallway, if we were going to put new doors on, wouldn't it make sense to, to arm them with an access badge as opposed to a key lock? And he said that we should not start there. That's not the place to start if, I mean, if you were going to build a whole new school and that's the security system you wanted, then that would make sense. But he said it will be very expensive to start your project with that as opposed to starting at exterior doors, building your system and then doing interior? Because you're going to have a lot of upfront costs. And what you get is not as secure as if you started with your exterior doors.
Okay.
So, he said, so you're going to have a badge system to get into eight classroom doors and you're still going to have keys to get in all your exterior doors. And he said it's going to cost you a lot of money to do that. He said if you started with your exterior, right, because that's the place you want to be the most secure, and then moved in, it'll cost less money in the run, in the end, right, to add those doors. So it seemed to me it's always going to, it's going to cost what it costs. It's not going to be less money then, but I think just that project is going to be a lot of money to do.
So would he, is he talking about putting fobs or badge access on the classroom exterior doors as well?
He, we can.
Otherwise those would still be keyed.
Right. What we, and I think that, like, if, just in my opinion, right, this wasn't his, this was, this was mine, right? If we were going to phase that work in, it's more important for us to be able to get out those doors than to use them to come in.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, sometimes classrooms will use, sometimes we'll use those doors to come in, but usually we use the main entrance doors to come into the building. It's just going out. So I would, that would not, I wouldn't start there either. So what, so what he proposed is to, you know, do a phase in, and he goes, I'll give you information for whatever you want, but, but we identified like eight exterior doors to start with.
Okay.
And so these are all scenarios that we can talk with Peter about and continue to talk with him about, and we can share what the information that has been gathered so far and that will help guide his work, hopefully.
That, as maybe you've said already, getting information about siding was a lot more difficult because there are so many options and because what you choose and how you install it depends on, and if you're going to change doors or windows, right, those things have to go together. And so people who, who did come were even hesitant to...
Yeah, have an in-depth...
Have much of a conversation beyond, well, when you know better what you want.
Yep.
And that, that is a complication that the engineer, the architect would be able to sort through, right?
My hope is that they'll be able to guide us to a intelligent decision. That's sort of, you know, tell you what your good options are rather than all your options, whether they're good, bad, or indifferent.
Yeah.
And what might make the most financial sense, you know, where you get your return on your investment.
And I'm really, I'm really happy that we have a meeting tomorrow with an architect. And one of the reasons is Chris Comstock went to a safety conference yesterday, and he came back with some information about interior doors and codes around those interior doors that are different than what we knew before he went to this conference. And so as we add interior doors, they have to be up to code. If other ones around the building aren't yet, that, that isn't, that's not a high priority yet, you know, it probably will become one. But as we add new things, they have to be up to code and those, the information he shared was different than what we had known before. And so, you know, had we gone ahead and already bought those doors without having that information, then they would have been wrong.
Yeah, that's the thing for your buck, that's what an architect can make sure that you have in mind.
Yeah. Make sure the details are covered.
Yeah. And it's beyond, you know, and it goes beyond like a, just a general building permit, right? This is specifically about school safety and security. You have to have a special permit.
And those are the things that DEW were saying, you know, we can come in and do whatever they tell us to do. That's not a problem. And we can tell you what order it should happen in, and we can tell you how much it's going to cost, but we don't know those codes. That's why you hire the architect, because they do know those codes.
Right.
So it's a matter of that collaboration.
Okay. And Paul had shared that there's, that there are a lot of codes around, you know, renewable resources and energy and green construction and that your architects will know that too. Don't want to get it wrong.
Right.
No.
Absolutely.
From what our list is, it's a big project, and so it's a lot of new bases.
Sometimes people have a hard time seeing the value at first in hiring things like a facility assessment or feasibility or hiring the engineers and the architects, but really with any kind of a commercial project, it is the standard, especially when it's a school and it's a public building. But it's just really, with the laws and regulations and codes, it's not an option anymore. It's sort of just what you have to do. You have to spend the money.
So we're sort of on hold until tomorrow's meeting, but...
I think after tomorrow, I will, I will know if he can confidently meet the timeline that we need him to do and hopefully we can circumvent or be able to stay in the threshold we need to stay in without having to do a formal bid process because that would throw our timeline off completely and so...
So would you need action from the board?
So would you need action from the board tonight to authorize you up not, in and not to exceed kind of way? So that we could meet those timelines if everything falls into place?
I think the motion could, could, um, without naming a, a specific dollar amount, but you could just say, you know, um. Without meeting the formal bid process threshold, something like that would be fine.
How?
Depends on if you want a dollar figure, but I don't know what that dollar figure is going to be right now. So it's a little, um.
What impact on the budget will that have if we're under the bid threshold?
Well, it's all on budget.
I guess what I'm asking is, um, what sort of room do we have?
I think that you could cover that without having to reallocate too much because the tuition invoices came in under what we thought. But the year's not over. So, but I think that is. Okay.
Should be okay.
Realistic at this point in time. Without causing any major problems.
So we would need a motion to, um.
I don't even know if I need a motion right now, now that I'm thinking about it. I think tomorrow is just a, I think I can. So as long as we're going to have another meeting fairly soon, which potentially we may want, because of the timeframe, may want to schedule another bond meeting. I know the holidays are here too, but, um, to be able to make a decision.
My question though was, um. Say. They say that they can do it. That the cost is something that's reasonable and it meets all of the requirements that you have and that the budget has. And you can't get people together until, you know, the sixth there's, of December or something or the seventh. That week. Is that time that's lost?
Okay. Because I think that if we did decide to go down this road, there's enough information that he already has to get him started anyway. I think, I think we'll. Especially with the holiday, like I'm thinking. I mean, no one's gonna be working on things next week. I think his office might even be closed, so. I'm just wondering if we should plan. There may be more information that I need right now. I'm in the very preliminary stages. I don't know what his questions are going to be. If, if he can move forward. So I'm wondering if we should try to schedule. Something after, shortly after Thanksgiving. Not that I'm hoping to take up any more time. But we may, it may be better to put something on the calendar now and if we, if I don't think that it's necessary. But I think it might be at this point. And something with haze in here.
So the week after Thanksgiving, the week of the twenty-sixth?
I don't think we have any.
We have Franklin.
Oh, that's right. I am out of town Thursday, Friday.
Wednesday, the twenty-eighth? Or a short meeting on the twenty-seventh earlier?
Or the board could off, the other option is the board could authorize. One of, one of you to work through this process. With an understanding that it would be a reasonable amount below the. Threshold that would require a bid and we would have to go revisit the whole thing anyway. That could probably work also if not everyone needed to be. Or two of you, I guess then it'd be a forum. It's harder than a three-member board.
Do you have?
A three-member board is difficult sometimes.
Would you likely be, so one, is, is the board's board doing this? If that works out, two, then you can just authorize. It's not, it's not a contract being awarded that's requiring a bid. So you could, if there's an, if there's an agreement to be signed, you could either authorize the board chair to sign it or the superintendent to sign it depending on the nature of it if it's.
As long as it was in line with what we're talking about right now. And no drastic changes, then that would be okay. I, I just don't know exactly. I've never done like a phase two of this, so I'm trying, I don't really know what the next steps. I talked to him some today, but he's still wrapping his head around this as well and trying to meet the timeline. So I just don't have a real clear. If we will meet another meeting, but your regular scheduled meeting isn't for a while, so. I'm not sure waiting till December eleventh to begin to talk about that is really gonna work. So maybe it.
And I know you're not available the first week of December essentially, so.
So maybe we should, now I'm trying to be cautious of using up your time, but I think maybe moving on the twenty-eighth or something might be.
I can do whatever. I mean, we have to get it done, so.
Yeah.
I don't think it'll be a four-hour meeting, so.
No, you may come in, make a motion, get the update. That'd be the end of it. He can at least. Cancel that.
So we're saying the twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Possibly tomorrow. I would have a better idea of if it would be necessary or not. And I could follow up with an email to say, you know, I think, I think we could wait until this day. This is what the. To the, to the regular scheduled meeting, I mean.
Five thirty as usual?
I was gonna ask if we can do six on that day.
Sorry.
Okay. Other people can do that?
Kristy, will you bring those things, all those things that you have tomorrow morning?
It's here, right?
I just mean wherever, where, where shall we go in the morning?
Probably, I didn't even check yet to see if that.
I know, I'm sorry. I was just trying to make it happen as soon as I could.
My guess is it'll be in the conference room.
Okay. Whoever's sitting won't be. Are we ready to adjourn?
I think you have some other things to.
I can, um, just let you know, I spoke with Lynn Cota. This isn't on the agenda, but I spoke with Lynn Cota today. They are gonna be contacting the attorney to. Straighten out some of the different conceptions about what needs to happen. We all agree that most of this comes from the fact that Act forty-six did not contemplate this sort of merger. So it, there are some quirks. They are an existing district as we spoke about last night, but they're still in their transition. And they have articles of agreement. So some of the things where I felt like I was getting stuck are because I'm very. Invested in ensuring I know about the process. For a forced merge district. And this is a forced merge on a voluntary. Like, so it's, it's an adoption rather than, I, you know. Can't come up with the right metaphor. But. So for example, when we were discussing about voting for school board members. They already have articles of agreement that state that it's done by Australian ballot. So we wouldn't get to decide how we do it here in Sheldon. It would be imposed upon us. So that kind of conversation. What they're talking about with negotiations, um, they, they, they are getting two sets of information. And, but what they're looking for right now is someone on the council. They don't actually vote, so it's just really input at this point. And so.
Someone from our board?
Someone from our, this board to be a part of their bargaining council. To just, you know, and I, I think that. There is an expectation from, and they're being told that Sheldon teachers will want to negotiate with them. And I don't know if that's, Vermont NEA is trying to support their teachers. By having two sets. I, I couldn't speculate. So, um, they're getting clarification and I also sort of said, you need to figure that out. We're doing our thing. And that will inform what you do. But I don't think, um. That it's a bad thing for someone from this board if they have time and, you know, to, to participate in that. Because you'd wanna, they're looking to take their agreements. And there's also support staff, of course. And, um. They're looking to streamline language. So I think there's more to come on that part of it.
So, I mean, are we looking right now at needing representation on two negotiation committees or boards or?
They're just setting goals and things at this point. I don't know what the timeline looks like. It's, it's more of a delayed time than what we've been doing. So I expect you guys to think about it. And not sign, not, I'm not coming here with a sign-up sheet. It's not, it's not my committee to put you, you know. I think it would probably be helpful for somebody to be a part of that, but. That's up to you and for them to figure out.
Did Lynn say when their next negotiations meeting is?
No. I didn't ask that question.
Sorry.
No?
I don't know if I happened to write it down. I know they're meeting at, on December eighteenth at six-thirty and I have negotiations written down.
That might be it.
It's the Ennisburg Library, so I'm thinking that is negotiations.
It's a bargaining council or something like that that they call it.
That's what they call it.
They're not actually negotiating yet. They're just planning.
If I'm available, I can go. Eight, Julius of the eighteenth? Sorry. Uh, yep, eighteenth at six-thirty.
In the, um, High School Library.
Lots of different pieces. So when they, so they're gonna get more clarification for themselves.
Yes. We sort of, it was a conference call. I was on speakerphone, the business manager's there, there's echoes. It's not the best environment to have a sort of a back and forth dialogue where there's a difference of interpretation of something. Cause then they're pausing for long times and I'm thinking, have I lost them? But I said, I, you know, I, I was just, I was saying, I'm honest to goodness, I'm not trying to be an obstructionist in any way. I'm just confused. And help me understand. So those kinds of things. I do understand some of the things. I had aha moments of, oh, that's because you already have articles. But. The negotiations, I'm still unclear about. But of course they're gonna work that out. They should work that out with the Vermont NEA representation too. So. But, you know, I'm not sure whether, I, I do know that, um. Sheldon teachers will have options. They can either negotiate and the associations agree to a thing, whether now or after July first. Or they could end up with, um, Montgomery, Bakersfield and Berkshire. School just, schools have one agreement and Sheldon has their other for a year until they come together. So they do have that option according to our legal counsel. And I assume he'll say the same thing to them.
And so does that message get passed to our, um, teacher rep? I mean. I'm sure they're working on this too, right? The Teachers Association.
Their UNICEF director is in contact with both supervisory unions.
Okay. I just want, I just, there's so many different players. I wanna make sure everybody's getting the same message. Okay. And are they getting clarification on the bond question as well?
Yes. I told them what our attorney said. They discussed with me the fact that they had, had information about a different but related topic. And it was not from the attorney, but it was from the agency of ed. And so, um, it may be that that was specific to another situation. I just said, uh, according to Pietro, he said he didn't see any reason why, under current statute. The board doesn't have authority to do it and that the debt and, um, and assets would be shared equally among all. Towns within the municipality, the new district. He didn't even have a hesitation about it. So I'm not sure where that's coming from.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think it will be the theme that we need Sheldon specific answers for a lot of things. Because it's such a, an odd situation comparative to the rest of the mergers, so. But we know now and we'll just ask Sheldon specific questions from now on. Okay. So we'll meet again on the twenty-eighth? Six?
If we need to.
Yeah, we'll try to let people know tomorrow if I can.
Yeah.
It's just good to get in there.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, great. I would indicate a motion to adjourn at six-thirty-seven. I'll make a motion to adjourn at six-thirty-seven.
I will second that.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Supposed. Thank you. Tomorrow as well.
Yeah.